Call the meeting to order, all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, member Thomas is absent. We have the agenda, we have one addition to the agenda, which is 7G campground extension. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Council? Not, do I have a motion to approve the agenda with that addition?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, four in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes, March 16th, 2016 minutes, you see them in your packet, is there any changes, corrections, clarification? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the March 16th, 2016 minute? So moved. Motion by Keith, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, four in favor, none against. We now come to our public open forum, is there anyone here that would like to speak? There's no one in the audience tonight, we even missing our high school kids, so.
Yeah.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak? Calling a third time, is there anyone that would like to speak? Our public open forum is now closed. We have no public hearings, we will then go into reports and presentations, park board report.
Okay, the park board met in regular session on Tuesday, April 5th, which was last night, they had several items on their agenda, they received a report on the campground extension and the cost estimates, and that will be an action item for you later this evening. They do recommend approval of the usages and closures for Sinclair Lewis Days, which is an action item, as well as closures and usages for tram, the ride across America. They are recommending we proceed with a web-based software for reservations to track at the campground, so there's several things that they have going. Also, you've learned that Splash Pad will be started up mid-May and will be opening when school lets out, and it may be Memorial Weekend if the weather's permitting, but our target date is when school gets out, which is pretty standard. And also Arbor Day is April 29th, we'll be planting some trees that way day, as well as there'll be additional trees in the Splash Pad Park and along the campground later on, but not necessarily that day, so you have three of these items that are on your action items for approval later on.
Questions, comments? Okay, EDA report?
The EDA met in regular session today at noon, and a couple of things on their agenda, they did receive the University of Minnesota survey results for that consumers and retailer or business owner survey that was sent out, I believe that's going to be available on the website at the chamber, and then we can also provide you with copies, and we were going to plan to email you copies of those, there were some formatting issues with it, it was running off the edge of the page, so when we get that fixed, we'll get that out to everybody, it has some interesting results. We did receive an amended letter of intent for the interpretive center property, and that is what you would be going into closed session at the end of tonight's meeting to discuss. They did talk about development plans for that tax forfeit at property purchase, that 8.8 acres on the north end of town, is still not in our name, so we can't officially do anything with that yet, but we're beginning to talk about how that should be developed as far as utilities, and if there's going to be a lot split or plating or what we want to see. We did receive some information on the demolition and grading at the racetrack, that is proceeding and that will occur in 2016, this is a joint project with us and Felling Trailers according to the purchase agreement, there will be some items that will be sold, and they will be sold on public bid, so those items will come to you for approval, so you'll know about them ahead of time, you approve by resolution when we're going to sell public property. And they also discussed marketing of the railroad property, the final piece of the Quiet Title Action is coming to an end, and so then we'll be able to actively market that, and we talked with them about what they would like to see there, and I believe the consensus is to continue to look for some kind of maybe multi-housing, like a three-plex, four-plex, couple duplexes or something, and we did talk about the idea of a single-family home, but it was concerned that it was an older neighborhood, and maybe that wasn't as attractive for a brand-new, single-family home, and that rentals might be the option, so I am reaching out to three different people that had expressed interest in it earlier, and that'll come back to you at a later date. So the only action item I have for you tonight would be in closed session regarding the interpretive center property.
Questions, comments? Okay, then we will move into our action items. 7A, approved chamber request for Sinclair Lewis Days, including the parade route.
These are several items of the use of city property for the Sinclair Lewis Days events, they include, I'll list the events there, there's lunch at City Hall on Wednesday, July 13th, then on Wednesday, July 13th in the evening, 5:30 to 6:30, in the Sinclair Lewis Park and parking lot, they want to use that for the turtle races and Wacky Water Night, and then also that same evening from 6:30 to 9, to Close Park Road and the use of Sinclair Lewis Park for the kitty and pet parade, and they have a balloon and balloon twister and DJ, et cetera. They're having yoga in the park on Friday, July 15th at 7:00 AM, so they're requesting use of the park for that. That evening is the fireworks, they want to close Park Road and use for the fireworks permit, that is from 6:00 PM till dusk. Crazy Days, the use of downtown sidewalks is Saturday, July 16th, the Craft Fair and Family Fun Festival, they want to close Park Road and use of Sinclair Lewis Park on Saturday, July 16th from 7:30 to 4:00 PM, and I believe this year they've added a flea market to that. Then on the next day or that evening, we have the parade, and they're looking for approval of the parade route, which would be the old route again, going back to the school, starting at State, 9th, Ash, 6th, Main, and back 10th to the fairgrounds, that's Saturday, July 16th at 7:00 PM. Last year, we did not use that route because Getty Street and Beltline was under construction, so our detour was gone, so now we talked to the chamber about using the same route this year as last year and staying all on one side of the highway, they came back and they prefer going back to the old route, so that is what's before you tonight, I don't know if Brian has a comment on that or not. And then also, we have the fly-in breakfast, which is at the airport on Sunday, July 17th, from 7:00 AM to 1:00, so there's a lot of activities, and the ones that are underlined on your packet are the ones that they're actually requesting approval, which includes parade route, closure of roads, use of the park, use of the sidewalks, those types of things. So our action requested is to approve the uses as requested, including the road closures and the parade route.
Questions, comments?
I just, I just want to commend Andrea for what she's doing to keep this alive, I know a lot of the surrounding areas have been kind of losing their city events due to lack of support, but she constantly keeps a good agenda for Sinclair Lewis Days, I think.
Very much so. Brian, I was just going to ask you, with the list of that stuff on there, do you see any issues or anything that you might have to?
I guess really issues I would see, well, just make sure the dance, the street dance is probably released a little better, it's been a little better, if actual people looking at the entry points are actually adding, probably put a little more responsibility in bar, for whoever.
And the street dance isn't part of this, because the street dance is not a chamber item, we'll have the buyers will come in for that.
Yeah, otherwise all the other bits, as far as the chamber.
Are good.
Okay.
Not usually not an issue at all.
No concerns about the turtle races?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve the uses as requested, including road closures and parade route?
So moved.
Motion by Heidi.
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, four in favor, none against. 7B, approved resolution 2016-29, approving the application of Melissa Ann Terrace Mustang Bar 3 Incorporated for a transfer of an on-sale, off-sale, and Sunday liquor license to be located at 515 Sinclair Lewis Avenue.
That was the staff report? No, we do have, I did include in your packet the application for the liquor license, and in order to transfer a liquor license to a new party, it does require approval by the city council. She has provided the workers' compensation information, the insurance information, I mean, we wait for the certificate to actually come at the time they actually get the insurance, but they do have approval for the insurance. The workers' compensation has been submitted, and the liquor license annual fee that we collect each year, that gets prorated between the buyer and seller, we don't get involved with that part of it, so if they choose to transfer or to include that in the sale, that's between them, so what we're really doing here is we're just approving the transfer from Teeny Rhodey, which is a Mustang Bar, to Melissa Ann Terrace, which will be the Mustang Bar 3, and they'll be transferring the on-sale, the off-sale, the Sunday liquor license and everything, and they are proposing for the transfer to become effective on May 1st.
Okay, on the application that we have in here, it hadn't been filled out by the police chief, but I understand that Brian has done his investigation on this.
Correct, this is a copy that was taken before it went down to the police department.
Okay, all right.
Are these, excuse me, are these annual licenses?
Liquor license are annual licenses, yes.
So she has a license period from 5/1/16 to 6/30/16.
Right, and in May, you guys will have in front of you all the liquor licenses for renewal, because our renewal starts on 7/1.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, do I have a motion to approve resolution number 2016-29, approving the application of Melissa Ann Terrace DBA Mustang Bar 3 Incorporated for a transfer of an on-sale, off-sale, and Sunday liquor license to be located at 515 Sinclair Lewis Avenue?
I'll make the motion.
Yeah, motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Any other comments, questions? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, four in favor, none against. 7C, approved cigarette license for Mustang Bar 3.
This is the same thing, this has to do with the transfer of the Mustang Bar to Melissa Terrace, and she has submitted the appropriate application and the licensing fee, so we're requesting to approve the cigarette license to Melissa Ann Terrace doing business as Mustang Bar 3, and that is also effective on May 1st.
Questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the request for a cigarette license to Melissa Ann Terrace DBA Mustang Bar 3 Incorporated?
So moved.
Motion by Keith, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, four in favor, none against. 7D, approved resolution 2016-30, authorizing advertisement for bids for fire truck.
At the March 16th meeting, the council authorized preliminary work to begin on the replacement pumper for, to replace the existing 1981 unit, the staff of the fire department's been working on developing those specifications and what they would need for the proposed truck, and they do have that listing now, they know exactly what they're looking for. We also joined HCAG, which is a cooperative purchasing program, the state of Minnesota's cooperative purchasing doesn't expand into the fire truck mode area, and so this is a separate cooperative purchasing program that specializes in emergency equipment, and so the intent is to publicly bid for the purchase, but also to determine if a purchase through cooperative purchasing would save us money, so we'll put it out there for a public bid, but also go to cooperative purchasing and see if we can put together a truck there, similar, so they'd all be apples-to-apples comparison. So the request tonight is just to approve the advertisement for the bids for the purchase of the truck, I did put the timeline in there, at the meeting of March 16th, we kind of authorized to go forward, tonight we're asking you to authorize advertisement for bids. We will advertise publicly on the 14th and the 21st of April, open bids on the 9th of May, and on May 18th, they would come back for an approval, and that would either include awarding the bid through competitive bidding or a similar vehicle through cooperative purchasing, whichever would give the biggest savings. So the finance committee then, once we know, you know, in the interim here, will be meeting to try to determine exactly how we want to fund that, and most of it is already funded through fire department funds, there just may be a small inter-fund loan that would be needed, so we don't short the fire department too much for operations for the year. So what we're looking for tonight is to approve resolution 2016-30, authorizing the advertisement for bids for the pumper truck.
Questions, comments? One question, once we get the bids and everything, before it comes to the finance committee, does the fire department committee look at?
The committee will be involved when we open the bids and review them, to make sure that the truck is exactly what they're, that we got bid out, exactly what they were looking for.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why we have that timeframe in there between opening the bids and actually awarding bids, so that there's plenty of days in there to meet and discuss these things.
Okay, sounds good. Any other questions? If not, do I have a motion to approve resolution 2016-30, authorizing advertisement for bids for pumper trucks?
So moved.
We have a motion by Keith, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Any other questions? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, four in favor, none against. 7E, approval appointment of police sergeant.
On March 14th, 2016, the city held interviews for the position of Sox Center Police Sergeant, we had four officers apply for the position, the interview panel consisted of Chief Fredericks, myself, Mayor Warren Stone, Sartell Police Chief Jim Hughes, and St. Joseph Police Chief Joel Klein. The interview consisted of each candidate having two scenarios, one being a critical incident scenario, and the other a personnel scenario, they had 30 minutes to review and prepare a written and verbal response for the two different scenarios, after giving their verbal response on how to handle each, they had eight additional questions that they had to answer that were unrelated and about various other topics. After careful consideration, Chief Fredericks, along with the interview committee, recommend Officer Joe Jensen for the position. Officer Jensen is at the highest step, which is step eight, right now at a rate of 28.59, and we're suggesting that he go to the sergeant bracket at step five, which is a rate of 29.97, this would be $1.38 an hour raise for advancement to the position. So the action requested tonight is to approve the appointment of Officer Joseph Jensen to police sergeant with the Sox Center Police Department, effective April 7th, which is tomorrow, or midnight tonight perhaps, at step five of the union pay scale. I know Chief Fredericks and Officer Jensen are both here, if you have any questions for either of them.
Questions, comments? I know going through that process was, when it came to make a decision, it was so close that it was probably one of the hardest decisions the committee's ever had to make, so, but we all have good faith that Joe will do a good job, so that's the reason why the recommendation was here, not that the others didn't, but there was, like I said, it was a very hard decision, so. Any other questions or comments? That, do I have a motion to approve appointment of Officer Joseph Jensen to police sergeant with the Sox Center Police Department, effective April 7th, 2016, at step five of the union pay scale?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Diane.
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Any other questions or comments? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, four in favor, none against. Congratulations, Joe.
Yep.
Congrats.
I invited him up here and he passed.
I know. I invited him before the meeting, if they wanted him, and he passed. I would have invited him. 7F, approve amendment to land lease agreement, airport.
The city, through the public utility, leases acreage at the airport to Dennis Mullner, 2016 is the third year of a three-year contract with him. The contract includes options for the PUC to determine types of crops to be planted, when they can be planted, so they can utilize the land for sludge application from the wastewater plant, and that is why the PUC negotiates that particular contract on behalf of the city. In 2016, Stearns County will begin collecting personal property tax from the leasing for land it rents from tax-exempt landowners, which would be us, so Mr. Mullner does fall into that category. This is the first time that they have done that, since the law changed in 1964, so this is new for everybody, and I believe you're aware of it. For 2016, the tax on the property is $1,166. The Public Utility Commission met, and they recommend that the city amend the contract for 2016 to reduce the rental fee by that amount, and that the landowner pay the tax. So current 2016 rate of $6,089.50 for the rental would be reduced to $4,923.50. Further discussion on how other land lease contracts subject to the same provision will be handled on individual basis, and they'll be coming to the board, we do have a couple other land lease contracts that fall into the same category, so, but tonight we're looking at the one with, for Mr. Mullner, we're recommending to approve the amendment to the lease agreement, reducing the 2016 rate by $1,166, with Mullner retaining responsibility for the property tax.
Questions? Did they just, you said this has been since 1964, this is?
The county assessors haven't uniformly applied this unique law across the state, and so this year now, the state said, okay, all the county assessors, you need to all do it uniformly, and so they had to go back through and look at all their tax-exempt property that they had, and then they had to reach out to the cities and the counties and whoever would own this tax-exempt property, to see if it was being farmed and leased out, and if it was, then they got hold of the landowner or the farmer, and got their information, and then they got property tax statements, so that's, yeah.
And we've got two other people that we lease?
We have one more at the airport, and we have the one, and then we have two other farmland ones.
Okay.
So there'll be three more.
So there'll be three more that we will be seeing on this. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve amendment to lease agreement for Dennis Mullner, reducing the 2016 rate by $1,166, from $6,089.50 to $4,923.50, with Mullner retaining responsibility for the property tax?
So moved.
We have a motion by Keith, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, four in favor, none against. 7G, campground extension.
The park board, they reviewed the cost for the expansion of the campground, the expansion includes the addition of five sites on the west end to replace five sites that will be removed in the middle of the seasonal site, so we'll be combining two into one later on, after this project is completed. The sites will be 50 feet in width, 4,000 square feet total each, and that is a requirement of Stearns County for our permit. The sewer and water and electric, they'll be extending that, those 200 feet to reach those additional properties. I do have listed for you the estimates of costs, the materials for plumbing, excavator rental, electric pedestals and gravel, and then also we would have some inspection fees and wire and labor for the electrical part of it. The estimated final cost will be less than $5,000, although last night at the park board, they talked about adding an additional row of trees between there and Park Road, so those additional costs will also be either added from the campground fund or from the Tree City, Build a Forest Fund, or one of those other funds that we have for trees. Final approval is needed from Stearns County for the extension, I did get preliminary approval previously, but I didn't want to go for final approval until I had, you know, a recommendation from the park board and the city council. We did set aside $20,000 for expansion costs, and keep in mind that there will also be a second part to this, which will be paving of the road, maybe next year or another year, we talked about maybe doing it in conjunction with paving the lot for the Splash Pad or something like that, but it's not a part of this proposal tonight. So what we're looking for tonight is approve the campground extension pending approval by the Stearns County, and you did get a map that kind of shows how it would lay out, and it would, they would be the same as the previous five sites, when we extended that, and this will remain at 80 sites, we will not have more than 80 sites, that's what our permit is for, this is simply to get some larger sites, and then the smaller sites, we can make those larger. Campers are getting bigger and bigger every day.
Questions, comments? Take it building the road and everything will be basically done in-house?
We're going to be doing everything in-house, except we do have some electrical work that we can do in-house, of course.
Right.
And, but otherwise, we'll be renting an excavator, and we'll be putting in the water and the sewer, and getting the gravel pads in, and the road and everything, we'll be doing that in-house.
Okay. Any other questions?
There was discussion last year regarding the hookups at the previous sites, and we kind of had, when I was on the park board, we kind of were talking about revamping those.
The old sites, you mean?
Yeah. Is that going to be part of this project at all, is there monies to do any of that?
When we, when we get this one done, and we do the shuffle with all the people, because, you know, they have their, whoever gets moved there, then the existing old sites, you know, we'll be able to remove some of the services to kind of make those sites larger.
And maybe keeping, I just was trying to rack my brain about the logistics of the way that the campers are supposed to move, you know, be backed in there now and how hookups have been.
Right, and so when this is all done, and then we start looking at those old sites, we'll look at that as well, but the way the services are right now, it kind of precludes us moving them around too much, but those services, that, those things, we would move ourselves.
Okay.
But we are going to require that they back in, starting this year, right?
I don't think we'll be able to, because of the way the services are, and so what will happen, as I understand it, is once these sites are done and they're ready to be occupied, all our seasonal sites, movement in the seasonal sites happens by the lottery system, so anybody in the campground that's a current seasonal will have the opportunity to request to be moved, and when the ones shuffled in there that want to be there, hopefully enough of those small sites move out, so that we can combine them, but it'll be a process to get them shifted.
Right.
And then we'll look at the sites and have a game plan for that.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the campground extension pending approval by Stearns County?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, four in favor, none against. Unfinished business, Oak Street Reconstruction Project. Keith?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, just a quick update, Vicki did a pretty good job of laying out the status in here in the staff report, as you can see, next Thursday will be the bid opening, so that's the next thing coming up, and two weeks from today, you'll have those bids in front of you to consider award, so we'll see where they come in on Thursday. I have had a number of questions from contractors already, so there is some interest, unfortunately, I had meant to check the quest site before I came here to tell you how many bidders, but I forgot to do so, so I can't, I can't report on how many bidders there are, but there's at least some, because they've been calling, so, and not a lot so far, but it's pretty common, they'll wait till three, four days before, so I expect to start getting a number of calls tomorrow, Friday, for next week's bid, so, yeah, any questions?
Questions?
No.
Just one, I'm sure you've got other jobs that you're opening bids on and everything, kind of, you have an idea how they're trending, low?
So far, we've seen about 20, 25% under.
Good.
So hopefully we'll, they'll stay there, but.
Hopefully our project is the same, yeah.
Yeah, it's, these are tough, this one's a smaller one, so it's a little hard to tell where this one's going to go, so it's, we'll see, it's a little bit of a crapshoot. If there was other projects right here in town or close by, you know, you might get some economies, but we just, we just don't know at this stage, but, but, you know, there's, there's still some folks looking, that's, that's for sure, so people aren't full up with work just yet, so, so we'll keep our fingers crossed and hope for the best, as we always do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Keith. No new business tonight, takes us to our consent agenda, we have our schedule of claims, unpaid claims of $104,028.36, paid claims of $1,496.20, for a total of $105,524.56. We have resolution number 2016-31, accepting the contributions of $225.29 from the men's card-playing group to be allocated toward the senior center, $201 from Coburn's Incorporated for, to be allocated, ambulance, $25 from Robert and Jeanette Stansbury to be allocated toward the senior center, and $450, which were gloves valued at $450 from Central Minnesota Credit Union, to be allocated for the fire department. I'd like to thank those people for those contributions. We also have an assembly permit request from Father Jeremy Tice slash Deborah Holt for a Corpus Christi procession to be held on May 29th, 2016, at Our Lady of Angels, about 200 people are expected to attend, the procession will be from Our Lady of Angels Church down Ash Street to St. Paul's Church and back down Birch Street. We also have a request from Tina Rhodey, DBA Mustang Bar, for a temporary extension of premise permit for a going-away party on April 29th, 2016, from 7:00 PM to 1:00 AM. We also have a gambling application, for example. We also have a gambling application for exempt permit request from Sox Center Lions Club for a raffle and pull tabs on July 28th through 31st, 2016, at the Stearns County Fairgrounds. And Public Works employee Andrew Rustling will advance from step five of the union pay scale, effective March 21st, 2016. Is there any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
I, I have one question on this, what is it, the Mustang Bar? They want to go to 1 o'clock in the morning. It's always been 12:30 in the past that I looked at. Why is this 1 o'clock?
Well, the, the band, the band stops at 12:30.
Oh, okay, all right.
That's would be number six on the local.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that.
And on that same subject, on for the Mustang Bar, we allow three extra permits, as far as having?
A year, yeah.
A year. Since the Mustang Bar is changing ownership, is the new owner going to have three, or is that the permits go with the bar, not the owner?
We've been counting them for the license year, so this is her third one for the license year that ends on, well, it would actually end June 30th. So then, July 1st, it starts over again.
Okay.
So it would be the location, though.
Okay. That, I was just concerned, we give this permit, and then we change owners, and all of a sudden, we got three more available for that bar, and I didn't want to get into that.
It's a good idea, though.
Yeah, it's a good idea. I just, the reason why, I just wanted to find out. Any other questions or comments as far as the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
So moved. I'll second.
We have a motion by Keith, second by Diane, to approve the consent agenda. Questions? Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four in favor, none against. Informational items.
A few things of informational items. Tree City, U.S. Arbor Day proclamation is April 29th. The city was again awarded the Tree City designation, and I did have the proclamation included in there, and also the Arbor Day name stock center as a Tree City in your packet. Severe weather awareness week is next week, and Thursday, there will be the tornado drills, twice, two at times that day, so when those tornadoes, or the drills come out, you know, that is what that is all about. I did include in your packet, the tax capacity rates are final for 2016, and I did convert that to the percent of your property tax bill that goes to each jurisdiction. You'll see commercial, just under 29% goes to the county, 27 to the city, and 27 to the state, and 16.6 to the school. So it kind of gives you an idea on commercial. And on residential, there is no state tax, so 35% county, 32% city, and 31% school. So it kind of gives you an idea of, of how your property tax dollars are spent. And then I have the tax capacity rates on the next page, which is Greek to a lot of people, because it has to be applied to a formula, and that's why I just broke it down to a percent of your bill. The sale of the transit garage is complete. We did close on that, and we received the check, and so we do have those funds that have been deposited. And then also, reminder that May 2nd, at 1:00 PM, Board of Review and Equalization is here, and I do need to have a quorum of the city council present for that. So that's all I have for informational items.
Questions? On the Board of Review, who's, I think Keith and I?
And Diane.
I am, too.
And Diane.
Yeah.
I'll be there.
Okay, sounds good. With that, we will be moving into closed session, so we're going to recess the normal meeting and move into closed session. Do I have a motion to go in to recess the regular meeting and go into closed session? So moved. We have a motion by Keith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Heidi. We will now recess this meeting and move into closed session.